Good evening. Welcome to your City Commission meeting. Please turn off or silence all cell phones during the meeting. In accordance with the Kansas Open Meetings Act, the meeting can be viewed live on Channel 2 and via Facebook Live. The public is encouraged to view the meeting using one of those options. The Leavenworth City Commission meeting is open to the public with limited seating capacity. To mitigate the spread of COVID-19 face coverings and social distancing is required to attend the meeting. Refer to the agenda packet on the city website on how to reserve a seat and/or submit comments. Meetings are televised every day on Channel 2 at 7:00 p.m. and at midnight and available for viewing on YouTube and Facebook Live. We'll call the meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance followed by silent meditation.
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. The first item on the agenda is Proclaimations. I'm going to go ahead and read this since there is no one here to represent the Susan B. Anthony Day. During the year 2021, Leavenworth County Historical Society recognizes the achievements and contributions made in Leavenworth for the women's suffrage movement that promoted social and political change. And whereas Susan B. Anthony, women's rights activist and sister of Colonel Dan Anthony, first visited Leavenworth in January 1865, advocating the rights of both freed slaves and women and was a resident in Leavenworth when President Abraham Lincoln was assassinated. Her brother owned the Leavenworth Times. And whereas Leavenworth was the largest city in Kansas in 1867 when it became the first state in the Union to offer a popular referendum on women's suffrage, Susan B. Anthony campaigned here along with the national women's suffrage activists such as Elizabeth Cady Stanton. And whereas Susan B. Anthony successfully led the campaign for women's municipal suffrage in Kansas in 1887, the first state to do so. The bill was signed by Governor John Martin on February 15. She returned to Leavenworth in 1894 for the second state campaign along with other suffrage and state leaders. Whereas the nephew of Ms. Anthony, Daniel Anthony Jr., voted for the 19th Amendment as a Kansas congressman and in 1923 introduced the Equal Rights Amendment in Congress. Now therefore, I Nancy Bowder, Mayor of the City of Leavenworth hereby proclaim February 15, 2021, as Susan B. Anthony Day in Leavenworth. Okay. Thank you, Susan B. Anthony. The next item, minutes from the January 26, 2011 regular meeting. Are there any changes or any corrections that need to be made? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve minutes from January 26, 2021, regular meeting.
Second.
It's been moved in second. And please begin voting with Commissioner Griswold.
Aye.
Commissioner Priceinger.
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Cast for five to zero. Next item on the agenda, Second Consideration Ordinance 8159, rezoning 1440 and 1460 Quincy Street.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, there have been no changes since the January 26 meeting. The City Planning and Community Development Director Julie Hurley is here if you have any questions. As is the Public Works Director Mike McDonald. But there have been no changes since the last reading.
Are there any questions in regard to this? Yes, sir.
Madam Mayor, I just want to reiterate and make sure I'm correct. Ms. Hurley, you laid out nine specific items on rezoning that they're very subjective. I mean, I'm sorry, very objective, that we should not deny rezoning if these nine things are met. Am I correct? Or kind of that is the statute or that's the court case?
Yeah, those criteria are laid out in Kansas State statute.
And looking at each one of those nine, that rezoning of that area, they all fit within that. And there's no reason that I can think of that we can deny that rezoning.
Yeah, that was our analysis.
Yeah.
In that sense, that's correct.
Because those are very objective. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on this one? If not, I'll begin the roll call vote with Commissioner Wilson.
No.
Commissioner Leonhardt.
Yes.
Commissioner Priceinger.
Yes.
Commissioner Griswold.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Four to one.
You know, I'm just, Madam Mayor, I'm just wondering. I don't want to get into a big discussion. Commissioner Wilson, based on those nine, which one do you feel doesn't apply?
Well, I just chose to say no. That's all.
Okay, next. Are we ready for the next item? Next item is new business, public comment. This is for anything that is not on the agenda. And do we have any public comment or anything to be read? Carla, we don't have anything?
No, I'm so sorry.
Okay. Okay. All right, moving on. General items, review 504 Miami and 824 Osage.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. This is again a review of two properties that we had first placed on the list for potential demolition that were first reviewed on July 14 of 2020. Just to sort of recap, these properties were given an extension to make repairs on September 22, October 27, and again on December 8. So these two are back before us tonight. We've got two properties, 504 Miami and 824 Osage. So we'll go through each of these just one by one as always, and you can have a discussion on each one. I know that the owners for each property are here tonight for you to hear from as well.
Okay.
So Taylor's got some pictures. We're getting that set up. So first one is 504 Miami. There is a building permit issued on May 11 of 2020 for exterior and interior renovations. As of now, the front porch has been removed and replaced. Upstairs windows on the front and rear of the house have been replaced. And there was a building permit issued for a new roof on January 13 of this year.
Okay.
So the roof is really the main thing needing still to be replaced. The owner has indicated that he does have a signed contract with the roofing company to complete those repairs. And he has included that quote to us and that is in your packet on that. And then as of today, the water has been turned back on at the house and the owner has provided us verification from Leavenworth Waterworks.
Okay.
That has taken place as well. So he is here and he could give you an update on when his roofing contractor is scheduled to be out.
Yes, sir. Would you like to come up and speak?
Only thing I can add is like the power is also on as well. The power has been on to the property, at the property since the day it changed hands. So we've always had electricity there and that's pretty much how we've been getting all the work done. As she says, we do have a signed contract with the roofing company to finish the main part of the roof, but the small portions of the roof over the porch is done. And the hole in the back where we did have a problem, that's taken care of, that's all done. Showing there, it's all brand new there. So we don't have any more leaks in the roof. The main part of the roof doesn't leak at all. So there's no issue with proceeding the work on the inside of the property. We've got a floor plan going and we're going to go ahead and start building out rooms and stuff and changing rooms and stuff in the inside of the structure.
Well, I think the important part is to try to get it occupied too. So do you have any idea when that could happen? You got the power on, so that helps a lot.
Yes, yes. We can probably, well, actually, we were thinking two months, but that's going to be too soon. We have a friend of mine has a mom who has a stroke, had a stroke, and she needs us a place to live. And the back of the house doesn't have stairs, so she could roll in with the wheelchair in the back. So we was thinking about that, but I don't think I can have it ready for her in like two months. So, but she would be number one occupant of the house. But I'm thinking I could probably have it ready in about six months, completely furnished. Because we want to also add a bathroom because it only has one bathroom in it. So I might go to that. And the bathroom right now is upstairs. We want to add a bathroom on the main floor.
Okay. What is your name, sir?
I'm Ramon Mohammed, ma'am.
Okay. Got it. Okay.
Mr. Mohammed, when do you think you'll have the roof on though?
That's, they already have us scheduled, not scheduled, but with the weather, he said it could take some time. But he's also kind of backed up. So we're just kind of waiting for the roofing company to move forward.
So and when do you, so when do you think that might be?
I'm not for sure. He just told us with the weather and he's just got to catch up. He said this month. So, but he didn't give me an exact date, but he did say February.
Okay. What I'm concerned about, I talked to the neighbors there and one neighbor directly to the west has been there 11 years. And he said, no one's occupied it. And I know that you just purchased it within the last year. But he said there's, you know, been squatters in and out of there and even of late, there have been at times. And what he's afraid of, you know, in the cold weather, somebody's going to start a fire. And if a fire starts in that house, you know the distance between your house and that house next to it. And he's very concerned about that. And he's hoping that this doesn't get done quickly. He wishes it'd be torn down because it's been, you know, a problem for him and the neighborhood. And I see your, the bid on the roofing. I don't see this as a contract. I see this as a proposal. As the, here's, the company is saying, here's our estimate, $600,900, and you can accept this. But I don't see it as a contract. Am I reading it wrong, Ms. Hurley?
Well, the signature is at the bottom on the right.
He said it's a contract.
I don't see it as a contract. I see it as acceptance of a proposal, but I don't see it as a contract. Is that in fact a contract?
Yes, it is. It is the contract. There's a lot of fine print there. And he said I would have to sign that contract before they can move forward with the construction of the roof, redoing the roof. And that's what he gave me as the contract to sign and get back to him.
Okay. That once again, I see that you've signed it. I understand that. But once again, I see this as an estimate and you agreed to the estimate. His estimate was good for 10 days from when he offered it and you did sign it. So that price is good. But I'm still concerned, wondering when it can be done. I know it's going to be sometime, but, you know, we hear sometime all the time. And when do you think that neighborhood can expect that roof to be done? And I know you have work on the inside, but that roof, you know, all of a sudden, the thing will look a heck of a lot better when it has a decent roof on it.
Oh, yeah, definitely. I agree it's going to look a lot better with the roof on it. But at this point in time, it won't slow down any of the other construction because there's no damage to the roof where it's causing it to leak on the inside of the property. So we can still move forward and he's going to come out and repair the roof as soon as possible. But I can give him a call and find out, you know, if he has a better date or time that he can give us when he can come out.
On December 9, when we gave you 63 days, nine weeks, that's nine weeks ago that we met, you said you'd probably have that done by this time.
Well, I never gave a certain, I never said we would have it done. I was always saying that that's what we're going to have done. That's what we're going to move towards having done.
Well, I mean, you asked and we granted a 60-day extension and what we're looking at specifically then was the roof. And the inside, you know, we're not really judging that here. But you said 60 days would do the trick. And we actually gave you 63 days.
Yes, the damaged part of the roof has been repaired. As I mentioned before, obviously, you already said there's no more leaking issues with the roof. It's maybe a physical, just a physical cosmetic with the roof that's on there now. But as far as it being a problem, it's not a problem.
Okay, so still, you won't even give me an estimate when you're going to have a new roof on?
I can only tell you what he told me, what he said. He said February, you have to, you have to get to us in February.
Madam Mayor, I'd be willing to go to 30 days.
Yeah, I think so. It's like you've done some. Let's hear from the other Commissioners first. Yes, sir.
So, go ahead.
I was wondering if we can just go ahead and take it off the demo list at this point.
My opinion would, it's up to the Commissioner. My opinion would be no because what needs to be done has not been done.
Well, and nobody's living there. I mean, that's the thing. If somebody was living in the house, we couldn't do anything.
It'd be different, yeah.
But Commissioner, did you have some comments?
I did, well, yeah. So you have the, well, the electricity you said has been on and you just got the water turned on and you got part of the roof done that you said was leaking. Is the house secure? So, you know, nobody?
Animals can't come in.
Animals or other, you know, people get in there to?
Yes, it's secure, yes.
It's secure?
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. That's all I had.
So that was the only question that I had for you. Do you check on the house daily and do you have it secure?
Yes, it is secure. And we do check on it periodically. And also have a friend still that lives here in Leavenworth that can go down and check on it. He lives like three or four blocks away.
Okay. Commissioner Griswold, do you have any questions?
Yes, I have two questions. The first question is for Ms. Hurley. On the property remediation agreement, there's listing of other repairs that needed to be done in addition to the roof. For instance, siding, replace and repair all exterior walls and siding. Sopets and eaves, repair all sopets and eaves. And windows and doors, replace flat, repair all windows and doors. So those still valid deficiencies with the property? Ms. Hurley?
So what we've been doing with the remediation agreements is basically let's know any property maintenance issues that needed to be done. And so as, so those are all more minor property maintenance issues. The siding on this house is not in terrible condition. It needs a good power wash, maybe some paint. There's not really much that needs to be replaced. The sopets and eaves are going to be part of any roof repair that would be taken care of. The windows that needed replacing have been replaced. So really, at this point, we're just at the roof that is still needing to be done.
Okay.
And I believe Attorney Waters has something to add.
Yes. Mr. Waters, did you have something to add? I had his hand up.
Hi, just want to say hi. Yeah, Devin Waters, City Attorney. I want to remind the Commission that we've got a couple of things going on. We have a remediation agreement here that does cover enforcement generally and covers staying even prosecution of code enforcement cases. I want to make sure the Commission understands that the process on what we generally call the demolition process is used as to unsafe or dangerous structures. Such that there may be times where there still remain code violations and that it do not rise to the level of unsafe or dangerous. You might, you will not be, you know, allowed to, you know, go through a demolition process if those do not rise to those levels. That does not mean that those other remaining issues cannot be enforced through municipal court or otherwise. I don't want the Commission to conflate, for example, if, you know, the property is completely done and there's, you know, one issue, you know, one other kind of issue, that they could still demolish property. You know, I want to make sure you understand the difference between a process for removing and raising dangerous and unsafe structures versus still enforcement of code violations. And a remediation agreement does address more than just what might constitute an unsafe or dangerous structure. It also speaks on still prosecution of existing code violations. So even if the City Commission were to take certain action as to it being unsafe and dangerous or not being unsafe or dangerous, that does not necessarily mean that remaining code violations could still not be enforced. I just want to make sure that the Commission understands that distinction.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Madam, Commissioner Griswold, I have one question for Mr. Mohammed. How long has he been the owner of this property? Since May, was that when the?
Yeah, that's when he got the building permit initially.
Yeah, since May. So the major thing with respect to, and this is for Ms. Hurley, with respect to safety and potential dangerous situation is the roof. Is that, is that a fair assessment?
Yes, we believe so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So Commissioner Priceinger proposed 30 days. What is your, what's your thoughts?
Do you think you have to done it every day?
Well, I'd like to see if we can just go and remove it. It's been a, it's been a challenge getting it to where it's at now. And I've been under a lot of stress. I mean, I just want the stress removed and see if we can just take it off.
Get the roof, get the roof done.
I'm going to get the roof fixed. It's going to get fixed. I mean, if we can just remove it off the list, that'll be, you know, we're going to move forward. We're going to continue to get this thing up and running and make all the necessary prayers to get it living in. And then with my mom's friend having a stroke, I'm still under pressure to get it up and running to get it occupied.
Mr. Mohammed, I haven't, I didn't look at it over the last couple of days, you know, since the snow came in. But I looked at it further closely last week. There's been no work on that roof that I could see. And go around the backside, that back porch roof area is definitely caved in or bowed. It needs work. I consider it to be, it's something that has to be done. And you asking us to remove it from the list, then it could, if we want to put it back on the list, we go through another year-long process getting to where we are today. That's why, you know, you told us December 9, the roof would be done. We'd give you nine weeks, 63 days, and it hasn't. And now you're asking us to remove it. I can't go along with that. But if you're saying it's going to be done this month, we give you another month and it should be non-issue.
Yep.
And the roof is, the roof is really the only thing holding it apart. You put on a porch and you replace the back window up on top and the front window up on top. But the other windows have not been replaced.
The other window is also brand new, right behind the trailer. That's the brand new window as well.
On the lower level?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't see that one. I saw the one on top.
Yes.
But, you know, I think giving 30 days is plenty. You signed a, or, you know, you have this estimate dated July 11, or, I'm sorry, January 11. And 30 days from now is going to be whatever our meeting is, mid-March.
March 23rd.
March 23rd.
So it'll be more than 30 days.
You know, that's, what'd it be? 14 plus 28, 42 days from now. Basically, it'd be six weeks. And I think that's.
Would that work for you?
Okay, six weeks. Yes.
Till March 23rd.
March 23rd. All right.
Yeah, I'm in favor.
I'm in favor.
Six weeks.
Okay.
They're meeting on March 23.
Okay.
March 23rd.
Thank you.
Good luck, Mr. Mohammed.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Call your man here, who is it? Your Christian Brothers.
Yes.
Tell them you need work done. That you're, yeah.
Okay, thank you guys.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next item is 824 Osage.
Okay, again, on this property, there was a building permit issued.
Wait a minute, we didn't have a motion on that. Did we have to?
No, we wait, we'll wait till the end. We'll need consensus on each one and then you'll make a motion at the end to proceed as the consensus was noted. So, yeah. So for 824 Osage, there was a building permit issued on May 22 of 2020 for a roof. There was a three-month extension on the permit approved on October 16 of 2020. Building inspection staff did visit the site last week on February 3 and indicated that the work that had been performed to that point does not meet building code requirements. Basically, building code does allow two layers of asphalt shingles. However, in order for that to be allowed by building code, the first layer of asphalt shingles in the roof structure itself have to be in good condition. And that is not the case at this point. So there had been no, the owners had not called for any inspections on the roof up till this point. So we went ahead and sent out building inspection staff on our own and they made that note. They also sent a letter to the property owner on February 3 last week indicating that their permit was considered void due to a lack of progress and that three-month extension that they've been given back in October had expired. So there is a copy of that letter in your report as well. So the roof is still needing to be done as we talked about last time. That is really the main thing that we're needing on here. There are a number of other property maintenance issues, but the roof is really the main thing that we were looking at.
Right. How long has this property been vacant?
So the last water service here was in 2018. And so that's what we generally use to determine how long it's been vacant.
Two, over two years then.
Three years.
Yeah, depending on when it was. Yeah, two, three years, yeah.
And there's like no water or electricity?
There's no water service. Our building inspection staff did perform a courtesy inspection last year, I believe, in October for electric service since it had been off for over a year and made note at that time that the wiring, the box, basically everything would need to be replaced in order for electricity service to be turned back on. And to this point, there's been no permits pulled to do that. So as far as we're aware, there's no electric service to the house.
Okay, so nobody can live there even if the roof, if the roof wasn't leaking. I guess they couldn't live there anyway. Is there someone representing this property here?
Where do you want me to start? We are working on the house.
How long has this property been vacant?
I'd say a couple of years. Not really vacant, but we didn't have the utility and stuff on. My husband stayed there up until.
Well, if you didn't have utilities, then it wasn't vacant.
Pardon?
Okay, go ahead.
My husband used to stay there all the time. I live in Lansing, or he does too now. He's not well, okay? I've been, we've been trying to get this done. We've had, well, COVID, everything. But anyway, we're getting, we're doing it. I'm sorry, we're not doing it as fast as you would like. It looks a lot better than it did. The only thing wrong is, y'all know, we've had trouble with the city for a long time, because that's what my husband did for a living. He jumped. So we was constantly getting called, we clean up, we do this, this. Anyway, he's not working now. He's not even able to take one recycle thing down. So it's slow, but sure, we're getting the money. We've got all the roofs, you know, the stuff for the roof, like you said, it has to be tore off. We've got boards we've been replacing. We've got the, one side is almost done. We're putting the thing up and the boards, we still, we got a tarp now, but slowly, but surely, we are working on it. I'm sorry it's not as fast as you would like. Give me another 30 days and I'll go a little farther, as far as saying, it will all be done by the time we come back here in 30 days. There's no way, no way anybody could ever do that.
Commissioner Wilson?
What do you plan on doing with the house?
I wanna move home. That's where I wanna live.
The thing is, if you were living in the house, we couldn't touch it, like I told the other guy.
But we said that. I said I could go back home and some way, somehow, I could still go out, but live there, you know? As long as I'm there, I stay so long, I'm living there.
What about the wiring?
The wiring, that's what I'm saying. I wish I could say I'm gonna have it rewired tomorrow, but no, but that's something we know we got to do before we move back in. But the first thing is getting it looked outside, cleaned up, so it looks good, so nobody can complain how bad it looks.
It's not how bad it looks, it's how safe. We're talking about an unsafe structure here.
That's why we're working on it.
But yeah, safe, no, well, I was just gonna agree with you.
Yes, I agree too, as far as living there right now, but once I get that roof on, it's no big deal. And as far as the bathrooms, no, there's no running water, but that don't mean I can't haul water from another house into the other house and flush the toilets and stuff. I used to do that for years when I was a child.
Anybody have any comments to that or questions for?
I said we tried to extend grace, we did everything we could to try to support you, ma'am.
I said 30 days, and I'll see y'all back here then, but I'm working on it.
But then it won't be any, you said that last time.
Honey, it's been, there's stuff been done. I've been working on it. But you, it's not good enough for you.
No, well, it's, it's an unsafe structure, I'm sorry.
No.
It's been vacant for a long time, and it's an unsafe structure.
Yeah, if somebody walked by and something would fall on them or something, that's unsafe. There's nothing falling down.
Madam Mayor, my thoughts are, on December 9th, 63 days ago, we said that they had to have a roofing contractor put on a roof. You know, we ballparked it, just grabbing a number saying it's probably $8,000. I think it, she had members of the family said they'd get that taken care of. Obviously, that hasn't been taken care of. There is a 1x6 going along the west side of the house, and I drive by it quite often. I did talk to a couple neighbors over the last couple of weeks, and one behind him said that if they're making an effort to do it, help them, but they haven't done it, and I said, you know, do they have a licensed roofer? No, obviously, we don't even have a building permit, and as far as we know, there's no licensed roofer involved. I, I think that we've reached the end of the rope on this one.
We had a permit to work on it.
That's all I have, Ms., Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
We had a permit, okay, it expired. We went to get it, a new one? No, not until, there's no need for us to spend out the money is what they said, to get a permit if y'all's gonna tear it down anyway. So if we get extension, then I could come back and get my permit.
Well, you've gotten several. We, I think we've heard enough. Let's go ahead and talk, go ahead. Thank you, thank you, ma'am, for coming.
And on this note, Mr. Derringer did come into our office today, this afternoon, to try and get an extension on the permit, and I said that he would need to wait until tomorrow since you were discussing it tonight, and that we weren't gonna extend a permit on the same day that you were discussing it, but that if the commission decided to extend it, he was welcome to come back tomorrow, and our building inspection staff would be happy to extend the building permit for them.
Does he have a contract?
Not that he indicated to us.
So he wants to extend the permit, but there is no contract?
Not that we're, not that he indicated there's no roofing contractor.
And that was one of the things we asked for, what, back in December?
If we could afford one, we would have one.
October before that, and before that, and before that.
Oh, I would definitely get one. I would already had one if y'all wanna pay for it. I don't have the money.
And Madam Mayor, the work that has been done isn't to, doesn't meet current building codes?
No, it doesn't. It doesn't, I understand that. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Griswold?
No, I, I don't support the extension. I, I just think there's no, like, contract for a roofer. This has been the case for the last six to nine months, and we've been, you know, multiple extensions. I, I, I just don't think we have any more room to give another extension, because I really don't see any improvement, and particularly in terms of the, the most important deficiency, which is the roof. And I think, I, at this point, I'm, I'm not willing to grant another extension, and I would like it to remain or to proceed, you know, as the fact that it's on the demolition list, and I think we need to move forward on that, with that particular option.
Go ahead and have a seat, ma'am.
Okay, I, one more thing to say, may I? If I own the house, why would I have to have a, what you're calling, a license, somebody put it on for me?
A licensed roofer?
Yeah.
That's been the requirement since day one, we've talked about it many times. Those are the requirements of any city, our city and other cities.
No, we're not gonna have arguments about it. Go ahead.
Number two is.
We've answered your question.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
So we're gonna move forward? Move forward with demolition?
Yeah, move forward.
Is this to require a consensus or a motion?
I'm, I'm, I'm in agreement.
We have a consensus.
Yeah.
Yes, okay. Okay. Ms. Hurley?
Okay, so those are the two that we had, and so as I understood, the consensus for 504 Miami would be to give an extension to the March 23rd City Commission meeting to review again, to see that the roof is done, and the consensus for 824 O-Sage is to proceed with demolition.
Okay. Ma'am, you need to have a seat, please.
Madam Mayor, I move that we proceed with the extension on 504 Miami until March 23rd and proceed with the demolition of 824 O-Sage.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting with Commissioner Griswold.
Aye.
Commissioner Priceinger?
Aye.
Commissioner Leonhardt?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
That means you're tearing the house down. I'll see you in Florida.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yep. Can I try and forth, no, first of all?
Okay, thanks. Next item on the agenda, review draft 2020 KDHE Annual Report for Stormwater.
It's to be handled by Mike McDonald, the Public Works Director.
Thank you, sir. Madam Mayor, Commissioners, this is our normal February activity related to Stormwater Annual Report that is to be submitted to KDHE. We have provided a draft of the report, which is similar to the reports we have sent in since about 2003. It summarizes the efforts that the city has had, that we have taken in the last year to protect water quality within the city. You remember, we spent quite a bit of time last year looking at a new stormwater management program, and there were points for this and points for that. This report does not reflect that. This is the last report in the old style, the new style report you'll be seeing a year from now. The activities are going to be essentially the same, but the reporting requires from the state have changed. Traditionally, we have reviewed this report with the commission to answer questions that you might have of it, to give the public the opportunity to comment on the efforts that we have undertaken in the last year, and if there are those comments and questions, we will incorporate those into the final document, since this is a draft, and we will bring this back to the City Commission for a review in two weeks.
Okay.
There is basically the same material, the six minimum, minimum performance measures of public education and outreach and involvement, detecting illicit discharges, having programs to deal with erosion and all of that. All those things are in here, and we have, we have commented on all of them. I think the biggest comment within the report that is different is the impact that COVID has had on our activities. If you remember, we were shut down for such things as recycling in the brush site for several weeks back in the spring. Spring cleanup, and it's influenced us in some, several other subtle ways, and I've tried to address those in the draft of the report. This evening, I'll do my best to answer questions that you have or seek guidance for a direction if you, if you believe that the executive summary does not adequately reflect the direction that the city has taken.
Okay.
And we also have several paragraphs of the hard work that the City Commission put in adopting the new plan that will be in next year.
Okay. Are there any questions regarding to this?
Well, I just have a small one. Okay, so I was reading this, and, you know, it says this report, it says it's the last of its style, so does that mean it, we won't see anything like this annually, or it goes for a few more years?
There will be another report, but it will address basically the same items that we're currently doing and the ones that we committed to with the stormwater management program. It will be essentially a topic description of what we are supposed to do, the number of points that we're going to get for that, do we believe that we achieve our goal and we award ourselves the number of points? We have to get so many points in each section, so it'll be similar to this, but the pigeon holes that you see in the, in the draft, draft page, these will be changed. The information will probably be very similar.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Griswold?
Yes, Madam, Commissioner Griswold, I have two quick questions for Mr. McDonald. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I think it's on, it was on page 33 of the read ahead. There's a statement that says, and this was with respect to Stormwater Management Plan that we reviewed in October. It's staff directed to proceed to ordinances related to fees slash fines for operation of BMT installations, construction sites, freeze traps, and general maintenance of permanent water quality structures. I assume work kind of ongoing?
Yes, these are ongoing projects. We'll be bringing back these specific ordinances in a final form for the commission to review and approve over the next few months. But these were, these were key parts of the new stormwater management program that we would be adopting ordinances, increasing our regulatory effort in those areas.
Okay, thank you. And the other one is fixed on page 35 of the read ahead, and just, more so than a question, but I think in 2019, we eliminated the lead selection program the city had. We normally, you know, take the lead from the curb in half of the city one year and then the other half the next year.
Right.
All I can say is that, you know, I support, I supported that then, I support it now, but I did notice this fall, at, I'm not sure if people are not aware that we no longer do that, but there seem to be a lead, you know, just kind of run up to the, kind of the curb, and then put in the gutter, and there, when a big rain comes along, they're gonna be flushed into the stormwater, you know, the stormwater system. So I am concerned, and maybe we deal with that through our code enforcement people, but even in my neighborhood, saw around the city, a lot of leaves in the street that were, you know, ready to go into the, the storm sewers, and I am concerned about that because that can cause problems with the overall system.
Yes, sir.
So that's just a comment.
Yes, sir, we're, we're aware of those concerns, certainly at the staff level, and we expect it will be the topic of some level of conversation as we move forward, even though we were every other year, this seemed to be the year that everybody just pushed them into the street.
I know.
Well, I think some people didn't know, still didn't know, so, I mean, just set PR stuff and make sure we stress the fact that we're not doing that anymore.
Yes.
Because they, they probably realized it after, nobody picked up their leaves, but still.
Well, there's, there's more people home and doing yard work because of probably more of the pandemic, yeah, so.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. McDonald on this stormwater report? We don't have any action, so, on that, it's just the report, so I think we're good.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald.
Thank you.
Next, I, is that it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Read your body language. You were finished or not? I can't, I can't see through the mask. Okay, next item is Resolution B-2276, set limits for general improvement bonds.
City Clerk Carla Williamson will handle this item.
Mayor, Commissioner, this is an annual thing that we do each year at the beginning of the year, is we set the maximum amount for the general improvement bonds for the year, and that's based on a calculation of, set by Charter Ordinance 56. And it's, this year, the, the top amount, the maximum amount for general improvement bonds is $2,038,938, and that's based off of a calculation of 28% of the revenue produced for the tax year preceding the year of the bond issuance. So that calculation is, is standard from that charter ordinance that was put into play. So this is just that resolution, setting that bond limit for the year.
Okay, any questions, Ms. Williamson?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Ms. Williamson, when did Charter Ordinance 56 go into effect, approximately?
I believe it was, and this is just off the top of my head, I believe it was 2015.
Was that before or after the property tax reduction, 40% property tax reduction?
I believe it was after. It was in reaction to.
It was in reaction to. So that 28% is what we, if it was before, when our taxes, taxes levy would have been, the $7 million would have been around $11 million, and 28% of that would have been, you know, considerably more, but the Charter Ordinance 56 is based on our 27.8 mils, whatever, whatever we have right now, that Charter Ordinance 56 was.
Yes, and Charter, and I, I just looked that up, and Charter Ordinance, it was passed in December of 2015, but with a waiting period, so it didn't actually go into effect until March of 2016.
And the sales tax deduct, sales tax property rate reduction went into effect. Do we vote on that in 2016? Been that long? I can't remember.
Let me see if I can pull that up and where that's gonna be. I don't remember voting on that. I was here then.
That was, that was on the ballot, the property tax, you know, for sales tax.
I believe that was done by Charter Ordinance, what?
It was, I remember we had an election in February, but I can't remember what year for the sales tax, increased sales tax by 1% and more, property tax by, it'd be approximately 40% reduction, went from 52 down to what we are now. My point, my question, I guess, really for Mr. Kramer and Ms. Williamson, is, is this 28%, was it, is it based on, the Charter Ordinance 56 is based on the taxes that we are getting, not on a previous number, which is considerably higher? Do you follow, you, you understand the question? Am I, I'm probably not being very clear on my question?
So my recollection is that we had a percentage in, that we used, and when the property tax went down, we were basically not allowing ourselves to bond as much, which is our road project. So to normalize back up to the amount we had, 28% was the new Charter Ordinance that allowed us to essentially.
Okay, that explains it. Okay, thank you.
I'm just looking for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Madam Mayor, this is Commissioner, I have a very quick question for Mr. McDonald.
Yes, sir.
So this, these funds that we're gonna get through this bonding action are for the 2021 pavement management program? Is that, is that an accurate statement?
Mr. Commissioner Griswold, that is not necessarily accurate. That is the maximum amount we're allowed to bond in essentially general obligation bonds. We, we do the 1.35 million for the pavement management program is part of that, but it's not all that's used for that or all the capacity that we currently have for that, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, we have a motion.
I move to adopt Resolution B-2276 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please begin voting. Commissioner Griswold?
Aye.
Commissioner Priceinger?
Aye.
Commissioner Leonhardt? Commissioner Wilson? And I vote aye. Five zero, thank you very much. Okay, next item, consider purchase animal control replacement vehicle.
Chief Kitchens. Madam Mayor, Chief Kitchens from the Police Department. The Police Department is requesting approval to purchase one 2021 Ford T250 cargo van from Shawnee Mission Ford in the amount of $40,346. Every year, the Police Department conducts an evaluation of its fleet. In this year's evaluation, we identified a 2006 Ford Econo line van with well over 100,000 miles, has reached the end of its useful life cycle. The Police Department identified this vehicle in the 2020 Mid-American Council of Public Purchasing Contract, which is sponsored by, which was facilitated by Clay County, Missouri, and encompasses all of the metropolitan Kansas City area. Funds were allocated in the 2020 capital improvement budget in the amount of $51,000 for an animal control vehicle with the purchase of the car and the equipment and installation of things like kennels and such that would hold the animals inside of the van. Again, the cost of the vehicle is $40,346. The remaining amount of the $51,000, which is $10,654, will be used to acquire the kennels and have them installed in the van after we receive it. Again, I would be asking you to approve the purchase of one 2021 Ford T250 cargo van from Shawnee Mission Ford at a total price of $40,346, and I'll answer whatever questions that you might have.
How many kennels are there in there?
That is an excellent question.
Just curious. I didn't know.
Typically, we can haul about three or four animals. It depends on the size of the animals, and then it also depends on the behavior of the animals. Sometimes they'll try and limit it to one if the animal's particularly misbehaving or that sort of thing. But we will also have to make that determination on the kinds of kennels that we buy. The premium shoreline kennels are very expensive, so if we buy some of those, it might be two. If we find a slightly less expensive version, we might be able to put three in there.
Okay, just curious.
What will you do with the other van? Put it on Purple Wave and hope we get a couple hundred bucks, or is it completely junked?
So.
I saw it out on the street. It can't be completely junked.
Not completely junked, but I mean, is it?
Normally, we would have a police car or a vehicle that we use. Right, we would put it on Purple Wave. There are some local organizations that facilitate a lot of help and effort to us. So we are going to evaluate it to see if it might be available for donation in that case.
That's a great idea.
We'll have to see how that goes. And we needed to wait for this decision tonight to evaluate what we'll do. But we are certainly considering that as an option, given the efforts that we have with some private companies in town. Even though it's old and, and needs a little bit of work, we might still be able to get some use out of it. We use ours way more than an organization like that would. So we're considering that, which is a unique circumstance in this particular case.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds like a good plan. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Chief. So with that, I'll take a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the purchase of one twenty-twenty-one Ford T fifty, T two fifty cargo van from Shawnee Mission Ford at a total price of forty thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars.
Aye, second.
It's been moved in second. And please begin voting. Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee Hart?
Aye.
And Mike, Commissioner Griswold?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Thank you, Chief.
Half five to zero. Thank you, Chief. Next item, consider stormwater cost share agreement with USD four-five-three.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, this is an agreement that I'm bringing to you with the city in partnership with USD four-five-three. If you remember, the city and USD four-five-three executed a land swap, essentially parts of Tenth Avenue Park, which are already underway in transformation to a baseball and softball complex in exchange for David Brewer Park. As the construction commenced on the baseball and softball complex, the school district and city staff began to look at Three Mile Creek, which is a very important drainage waterway throughout the city of Leavenworth. And it was determined that some bank stabilization work would be needed throughout that channel along the park. There's a trail back there that's very popular, the school district's investment, subdivision on the other side of a bunch of water that feeds into that system. And so the first step in that would be to be a study. And since the school district is the property owner, it would be, it would sort of be their obligation to do that. But as it's a city's stream, and we are the previous property owners, and we still have property along that creek, we issued, are we into a cost share agreement with them contingent upon commission approval. So what you have before you tonight is the study that would study that waterway, much the same as we studied Independence Court, or the Thornton Street Project, or any of these other large projects will have, it'll be a school district contract with Water Resource Solutions for an amount not to exceed fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine, with the city offering to pay fifty percent of the total study costs in the amount not to exceed twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty cents. And then we would develop an MOU based on the results of the study and look at a project to stabilize and improve that stream bank. So that's the, that's what's before you tonight to partner with the school district on the study to study that stream, that stream bank.
Okay, has this been discussed with the school district, and are they amenable to this?
The school district is waiting on us, and that has been presented to their board.
Okay.
And they're, they're ready to move forward with the study.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Kramer, let's say the study comes back and says it needs half a million dollar project. Is that the school district's project, or is that going to come back to us again?
We don't know yet. That'll be, similar to Independence Court, where there'll be multiple options that you could look at, whether it's a localized repair, whether you, you move to larger scope. So we'll wait and see what the study brings back. And we'll, we'll have a probably a study session to present the study findings to the commission, as I'm sure the school district will. So we're a little ways down the road on what we end up with, but we'll bring some options back to you.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Griswold?
Madam Mayor, this is, yeah, this is a question for Mr. Kramer. Assuming that we, the city commission approves this particular agenda item this evening, when would the work start and when is the estimated completion time for the study?
My understanding is that the school district has already approved it on their end, and they're just waiting for the city commission to approve the cost share. So as far as the start, it would be soon. And then Mr. McDonald can probably give you a better idea on what a study like this, the time it takes to get something back to the parties involved.
Okay.
I think it's reasonable, I think it is reasonable to assume there'll be about sixty days for the study. Then there's the presentation cycle of meeting with the staff or the school district or the city commission. So if there's an expectation that something would happen this spring, it's not going to, as far as construction. But the study should be done in time to make decisions for projects that could conceivably be designed in the summer and fall.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions on this? No. If not, do we have a motion?
I move to approve recommending that the city agree to pay fifty percent of the total study costs, fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars, in an amount not to exceed twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Please begin voting with Commissioner Griswold. Commissioner Pricey.
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Five to zero. Thank you. Okay. Next item is consider design contract. Wilson and Company, seven hundred block of Potawatomi Stormwater Improvements.
Thank you, sir. Madam Mayor and Commissioner, this is one of our ongoing projects that be funded with the stormwater fee that was put on people's tax statements a few years ago. This is what we are calling the fourth project that falls into that category of orange fence type project. This is a larger one. It's primarily associated with flooding in the vicinity of the seven forty-one Potawatomi. You can see on the overhead, the, the red circle represents the, kind of the study area, and it goes from completion of a, of a previous project just south of Ottawa Street, south through the Catholic Church parking lots, and to the south side of Miami Street. The reason we need to study that whole area is, there's some pictures here of, in particular, the seven forty-one Potawatomi. As we go through these, you'll see that the existing system is deteriorated to the point it does not carry the water. It runs out of the inlets, fills into backyards, and then flushes back down through the inlets. And toward the end of this presentation, you'll see some, this, this is quite spectacular. That's a giant waterfall falling into, into the structures that we saw in an earlier picture, where it's come out of another structure. It's going in to a different one. The, this is the, the area that has really driven our concern with this. But the more you look at it, it's where do you start and where do you stop? So we have chosen to study the entire subject area that we identified from a half block south of Ottawa to the south side of Miami Street. There are some challenges in there. Besides, the pipe is a lot of metal pipe that's busy, crunched up and falling in. There are some weird sizes. We believe there are buildings that are built on top of the drainage structure. We do not necessarily know what we're going to do in all of these places, but we need to know what those ideas are before we repair this particular piece, which is somewhat in the middle. These pictures are ones similar to what we've seen before with the commission. The bottom of the pipe is rusted out. There are holes in it. You can see there's debris that's accumulated in it. There's, there's, you know, best of intentions when this was built. It has served its, its purpose and well past its, its useful life. So our proposal with Wilson and Company, and they are here this evening on the, on the call if you have questions of them, Justin Clout and Charles Loman, who have been working on several projects that we've had with Wilson over the years, most currently the second in Chestnut Storm Drainage Project. They can talk specifically about questions that you might have. But the proposal this evening is for the, the study, to recommend some alternatives on, as to what we can do in that area that we've identified as the study area. It is important to note that they have, are taking full advantage of the investments that the city has made in the GIS system, where we've integrated our contour lines, our previous flow studies from Blacken Beach and others. That information is all available to them, and I believe that has a reduced, reduced the fee, if you will, for this study so we can focus on kind of finding what we need to do to move forward. I expect there will be a recommendation for probably three separate projects out of this, possibly four.
Wow.
Depends somewhat on funding, depends on really the relationship between the storm sewers and some buildings that we believe are built on top of them.
Right now, you just don't know until the study's done.
Yeah, so you could just go do something in the backyard at seven forty-one Potawatomi, but you don't know whether it will be useful when you go to address the next part of the problem.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. McDonald, well, the picture's not up there anymore. It's the, the concrete, I guess.
One of the slabs on the top.
The slabs, yeah.
Yes.
We had up there. So is no, I mean, one, how old are those? So evidently, no water that is supposed to be going through there, through some kind of drainage system, is not at all, because it's all broke down?
It's broke down. I believe there's a tree that's grown into.
See, some kind of brush, yeah.
Yeah, this is the, the curb, the, one of the immediate foreground is just leaves and debris that's cut up on the, the bar that's across the entrance. The concrete structure in the background is in the low area behind seven forty-one Potawatomi. They had a tree growing into the storm sewer. I believe it fell over and destroyed part of it. And the water runs out, runs out of that.
Right.
Concrete structure. We believe for the most part, these probably originated probably in the forties and fifties. The, the long version of this is all of the street crossings and the alley crossings were probably built in the teens. They were separate structures, generally a stone arch, when the, the city was building streets through neighborhoods that had fairly sparse houses. And then over time, as people built houses or had yards that backed up to the stream, they've either themselves, or they had the city do it, or the city volunteered to do it, they would put in these piping systems between those well-construted pieces under the streets and the alleys. If you talk to older residents, like Bob Patswald said, when he was a, when he was a kid, he said, that was a creek. You could pretty much run up one from downtown all the way up to metropolitan and hardly, hardly ever go underground, except when you ran under the street. And so over the years, we've very diligently seen that creek filled up with different things. The, the city, I believe, has, has helped fill some of these sites over the years, where property owners gave us permission to fill material over different pipes and things. The, the lid you see here in the foreground, that's a replacement lid, but it looks, it's very similar to the way that they would have made them back in the day. It's a, it's an interesting part of, of old Leavenworth.
Thank you.
So this study and design will be expected to be completed this summer?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Mr. McDonald, go to that picture where there's a lot of water, where it's flooding, that waterfall, or.
The waterfall.
Is that thing dangerous enough that a small child or a small animal would get sucked into that vortex?
Yes. We try to keep the lids on them. The lids get blown off, but it's, yeah.
That's an imminent danger.
That is a real danger.
Can we have the six-inch reins or four-inch reins, whatever?
Yes, it's a real danger to particularly that property and, and the neighborhood in general.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the contract with Wilson and Company for the design, for the design storm drainage improvements at seven forty-one Potawatomi not to exceed twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars.
Aye, second.
It's been moved in second. Please begin voting. Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
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 And I vote aye. Five to zero. Thank you very much.
And just to be clear, Commissioner Wilson, this is not your company. Is that correct?
No conflict of interest there. Okay. Next item is the consent agenda.
I moved through the claims for January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one through February fifth, two thousand and twenty-one, in the amount of one million, eight hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars, three hundred and thirty-six dollars and seventy-six cents, net amount for payroll, number two, effective January twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-one, in the amount of three hundred and thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars and ninety-two cents, includes police and fire pension, and the amount of nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars and four cents.
Aye, second.
It's been moved in second. Please, please begin voting. Commissioner Griswold?
Aye.
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 And I vote aye. I think the consent agenda. Mr. Kramer?
Yeah, I'm going to yield the floor just briefly to our public works director, since he's here, just to talk about plowing. What can we do this time of year? What do we do with treatment? And what do we expect with these temperatures? So Mike, yield the floor?
Thank you. Madam Mayor and Commissioners, this is about the longest snow and ice thing we've had that I can recall in the thirty-two years. And it's cold. And while we have good equipment and good people, when it's cold, the salt doesn't work much below probably twenty-five, twenty maybe. The calcium chloride that we use gets weaker and weaker. So when you get the single digits, nothing really wants to melt the ice and snow, except if it gets warmer. So once we realized that we had a cold stretch coming, and it's much longer than we had originally anticipated, we upped our amount of material that we put out, and we wanted to get everything out pre-treated. It got cold. It didn't rain. We just got the light three inches maybe of fluffy, fluffy snow. That's just miserable. If you, if you walk through your driveway before you did anything, and then you shovel it, there's ice under your footprints. It's just the weirdest, it's just the weirdest thing. But we got out and pre-treated all of the emergency snow routes and the hotspots in the neighborhoods at least twice before it got really locked us in. So we also have not been plowing in the neighborhoods, because you start putting that pressure on that snow, it really turns it into ice, and now it's more slippery. And in fact, the street that I live on, it's actually pretty easy to get around. I drive a two-wheel drive, two-wheel, two-wheel rear-wheel drive vehicle around, and it's easier to drive down my snow-covered street than it is on some of the streets that have had moderate amounts of traffic. That being said, we have our crews on split shifts, and we're off the twelve-hour shifts. We're on the regular eight-hour shifts, because this thing's going to last on through till at least Saturday, and then it just gets cold. And what we are doing, like this evening, is they're looking for areas where the tire pressures, the tire heat has warmed the ice, the snow up enough, it's kind of chunked up, or it, for whatever reason, it has, has broken up. And they're trying, what I call, de-slush the pavements. It's primarily focused on the emergency snow routes, but they're also keeping an eye on other areas where materials is broken up. We want to get that off the street so it doesn't get frozen in weird shapes and chunks come Saturday and Sunday. So it's, everyone's different. This one's different than all of the others. But we, we appreciate that people have called in and, you know, asked questions. We have, we have GPS on the trucks, and we can tell if we have missed a street. And I won't say that we're perfect, but we do check if. do check if somebody calls and says that we were not, uh, we're not in their neighborhood. Uh, we also have our, our street foreman, our crew leaders, uh, check. They follow the trucks while we're, uh, while we're out essentially placing the salt and calcium chloride, make sure it's actually coming out the back of the truck. Sometimes the equipment says it is, when it's really not. So you, you need to have, have somebody make sure it's working the way it's supposed to. So we're, uh.
We'll give the employees our appreciation, please.
Yes.
This is a tough job this time of year.
Certainly do that, uh, because they, uh, it makes for a long winter. Everyone likes a little bit of overtime. Uh, I think they've liked enough of that now, and they just as soon go back to normal, but we got about a week to go.
Yes, absolutely. Yes, sir.
That's all I have.
Okay, that's good. Mr. Grieswald, do you have anything this evening?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Commissioner Pricey, do you have anything?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. Uh, if anyone has the time to go shopping at Price Chopper, you can see that the renovation has started. Uh, it's moving along. It's, once again, I think, am I correct, $12 million renovation, is that right, Mr. Kramer?
All told, with land purchase and all that.
Yeah, it's $12 million. They're reinvesting into the community and reinvesting into their store. Uh, they're staying open throughout the process, and, uh, it'll be, it'll be nice when it's finished, but it is ongoing now. Uh, sadly, reported in the last 24 hours, two restaurants in town have closed down because of COVID. Uh, they've announced it. Tenpenny, uh, announced this afternoon they're closing for two weeks because they had a customer that could, uh, uh, regular customer, uh, uh, came down with COVID. So, out of abundance of caution, they're closing, uh, putting everybody, you know, through the two-week, uh, quarantine period and doing a deep clean. And also, the Metropolitan Restaurant out on, uh, 16th and Metropolitan is closing, closed yesterday. They had an employee test positive for COVID, and, uh, I, uh, am very sorry to see those two mainstay restaurants close, but, uh, I do applaud them for doing, uh, the right thing. And lastly, I talked last week about, uh, Mr. Rodney Stephen requesting a tax exemption for his health clubs, Genesis in particular. Uh, there was a story in the Kansas City Paper, Kansas City Star reported today that even though he's, he's asking for a tax exemption, he's actually, uh, about $600,000, over half a million dollars in the arrears on, uh, property taxes that he owes. Uh, once again, he's making the argument that, uh, city, uh, are, ours, not ours in particular, but all city community centers, they have a weight room, so therefore, uh, that's unfair competition to him, because they pay no taxes, and so he has to pay taxes. He's looking for a tax break. Originally, the Kansas Policy Institute, uh, last week, they were voicing opposition to that. They said that, that's bad policy. Something changed in the last week. Now Kansas Policy Institute is saying, "Hey, yeah, this is something we need to do." Uh, I guess all I'd say is follow the money. I have nothing else.
Okay. Commissioner Leonhard?
No, I do not have anything.
Commissioner Wilson?
Uh, drive safe, and, uh, for the kids that have to walk, uh, I encourage the parents, please do your best to see if you can get your kids to carpool with someone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it's so cold out there.
It, it has to be cold.
Um.
And take care of your pets.
Yeah.
Yes, the only thing I have, um, the city is partnering with, uh, the county health department, and will be giving, uh, vaccines in the gym. Now, will they enter through the gym doors, or will they enter through the front?
So, uh, that's right. So tomorrow morning, um, the city and county starts our joint vaccination center. It's appointment only, so you'll have to register through the health department. And they will be, there'll be signage everywhere, but the main entrance is through the gymnasium, the south entrance of the gymnasium. We do have ADA accessibility through the main entrance, um, if that's needed. There's plenty of stacking. It's gonna be very cold outside. We've seen some scenes from, um, other areas around the community where, um, or throughout the metro, where some, uh, residents were waiting outside in the cold. The goal is to bring everybody inside and have that set up. So that is tomorrow morning, um, and it is through the south side of the gym.
Well, and I understand that we're getting anywhere from 1,100 to 1,500 vaccines each week now. So that would be, uh, things will be ramping up, and having it here in the gym, I think, is a great idea. Um, we'll be able to have more than one station, probably.
Yeah, I believe they're gonna have seven.
And that'd be great, and then people will not be crowded like they are out at the health department. So I think it's a really good thing, and, and I think people, I, I get a lot of calls about vaccine, and, and I think, I think people will be pleased to see how fast it's gonna be rolling out. So, thank you for that, sir.
Madam, a couple of other things, I, I forgot. Uh, it was announced on TV tonight that Walmart, uh, in Leavenworth will be, uh, having the vaccine too. I don't know when that will hit, uh, but that should also help. And, uh, I know last week, when we authorized the city manager to write, uh, to our delegation, Kansas delegation, about the tax exemption for Genesis in particular, I'm just wondering if Mr. Kramer is able to do that, and it's.
Uh, yes, I did, and I'll, I'll send that to you all now. Um, and I did get two responses, um, back from our, uh, delegation. I sent it to all four, and I've, I did receive two back.
Did they state their position?
Uh, both that I sent it to stated their opposition, uh, to, to the Senate.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any other, um, business or comments before we close? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I second.
It's been moved in second, and please begin voting. Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
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 Commissioner Grieswald?
Aye.
And I vote aye. We are adjourned.